What's happening?
Witnesses.
A witness from the defense. Yeah, I see the judge.
Hey, I was gonna say, we didn't make the W.
You don't have enough time for this?
Yeah.
Good morning, do we have?
Nancy, do you have a probation?
Morning Nancy.
Morning.
Morning everyone, I ask you to please rise for the opening prayer and pledge allegiance before we convene a commissioners public meeting. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for a new day that you've granted us life and gather in a country full of freedom and conduct business of our beloved county. Lord, this morning we thank you for the American farmer. This past Tuesday, we celebrate the 50th anniversary of the National Air Cultural Day. We thank you for our farmers who turn the soil, plant our crops, and raise the livestock to feed us daily. They are the 2 percent of the population that feed the other 98 percent of us, and without our farmers, we would not have one of the necessities of life. Their work is long, hard, tiring, and many times exhausting. Their worth ethic cannot be matched. We ask you to bless them and their families, and may their harvest be bountiful each season. And Father, we gather this morning with our freedoms in this great land because of those who have fought for our freedoms. And one of those groups of our veterans are the Vietnam veterans. Next Wednesday will be the 50th anniversary. On that date, in 1973, combat and combat support units withdrew from South Vietnam. Slightly more than 2 million Americans served in uniform in Vietnam and Southeast Asia. They traveled across the world to fight oppression in the name of freedom, and we publicly thank, support, and honor those veterans for their service. We thank and remember those who did not make it home, that paid the ultimate sacrifice for freedom. Father, bless these veterans and all our veterans. Provide them the resources that they need for them and their families. Now, as we conduct our meeting, may your hand be over us, provide us with your infinite wisdom, and guide us in our decisions, they will be in accordance with your will. These things we humbly ask in your name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. At this time, we'll convene our commissioners public meeting. Commissioner Ms. Sardar is not with us today, as he is not feeling well, and so we'll move on with the agenda. Director?
1.4, approve minutes of previous meetings.
As for motion?
I move to approve.
On second, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie?
Public comment on agenda items online.
Mr. May?
My name is James May. I'm actually a former Army Chaplain, Iraq War veteran, and just want to start off, I know that we have a number of veterans, and that will be addressed here in a little bit, but I just want to start off by saying, thank you for your service. I had the very unique privilege of serving in Iraq with soldiers on the front lines, at Walter Reed Army Hospital with soldiers who have been injured, and at Arlington National Cemetery, for those who made the ultimate sacrifice for our nation, and have witnessed firsthand the sacrifice that has been made for our freedom, and just want to say, thank you to those of you who are here, and our veterans, this morning. I am currently upstairs, I'm your new neighbor, I'm the new regional director for Congressman Dan Muser. I am so new, that I don't even have business cards yet, but I will make sure that the commissioners have all my contact information, and if you all ever need anything on the federal side, just want to let you know that on behalf of Congressman Muser, I'm upstairs, and will be available for anything that you need. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for your service.
There's none online? Proclamation. Proclamation in recognition of Vietnam veteran, Vietnam era war veterans day. Whereas, the Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act was signed into law in 2017, designating March 29th as the National Vietnam War Veterans Day, and whereas, in recognition of what the Vietnam veterans and their families endured during the war, upon returning home, and throughout today, and whereas, in remembrance of those service members who lost their lives, and those that remain unaccounted for, and whereas, in acknowledgement of the unspeakable hardships they suffered, endangering their lives for the values of freedom and democracy for all, and whereas, today, we remember the men and women of Lycoming County and their families who served our nation with honor, courage, valor, and distinction, and thank them for their service and sacrifice. And whereas, we are forever grateful for the valuable contributions they continue to make today, and therefore, on behalf of the grateful citizens of our county, the Lycoming County Commissioners urge all citizens to join with us in recognizing this day as a tribute to the Vietnam, to the veterans of the Vietnam era war, the sacrifices they made and continue to make on our behalf. Signed, this day, Scott L. Metzger, Chairman, Tony R. Missair, Vice Chairman, Richard Maravida, Secretary.
Good morning, Commissioners, Matt. Thank you for the kind words dedicating, next Wednesday, the 29th of March, is Vietnam Veterans Recognition Day. It's a national day, and we're really happy that the county has chosen to recognize our Vietnam vets. May I have them stand?
Absolutely, yes.
And identify themselves, Vietnam vets. Please stand. Finally, we have Walter Steinbacher, he was a veteran of the US Marine Corps. Who we got? Chuck?
Stutzman.
Stutzman, US Navy. Tom Boyle, US Army Advisor. John Lannan, US Army. Joe Graffus, US Army. Aldous Carpenter, US Army, 9th Infantry.
Clyde English.
Clyde English.
101st Airborne.
101st Airborne. Rodney, Rodney, who were you with Rodney?
Ken Reader, Marine.
Ken Reader, okay. Anybody I missed? Okay, I want to thank you all for being here to be recognized, and I want to recognize your service as a fellow Vietnam vet. So, thank you, and please honor the day.
Mike, you just had a trip back to Vietnam, can you tell us a little bit about it?
You have enough time? Yeah, it was incredible. We just got back about two weeks ago. Went over with another Vietnam vet, who had served a couple tours there. I had left 52 years ago, and under different conditions, obviously, and to return and see that country, what it's happened to it. It's a communist socialist country, let there be no misunderstanding, but the strides that they've made and have made economically, and retained much of the culture. And I got to see a lot of the country that I had never seen before. We flew into Hanoi, which was mind-boggling, to see skyscrapers and high-rise apartments, big office buildings, everybody's got a scooter, and they all drive them at the same time, and not in the same direction. But all the vehicles, taxis, and all these scooters, and never saw one fender bender, and never saw anybody raise their fist in anger. They peep a lot, but we were in Hanoi, we were in Way, we saw heavy devastation in 1968 after Tet, much of the city was destroyed, you really wouldn't know it now. We went to Denang, and then down to Delot in the central highlands, beautiful areas in the mountains, and then we went down to Saigon area, Tainan, Kuchy. We didn't get down as far as we wanted to in Adel, we just ran out of time, so we'll save that for the next trip. But it was marvelous, I'm glad I had the experience to go back. Thank you.
Thank you. There's three populations that we don't think enough, and two of them I mentioned on here today, the farmer who feeds us, and the veteran in the military that protect us and keep our freedoms, and the third one would be law enforcement, the EMS. And we can't thank our veterans and our military, current military enough. We wouldn't have the freedoms we have if it wasn't for you folks, the ones that paid the ultimate sacrifice. And we have to continue to educate our youth, how important it is to respect and honor our veterans and our military. This past week, we were down Harrisburg for Commissioners Conference, I'm glad Judge Buds is in the audience, and Mike you're here at the same time, we had the honor in a meeting, the retired Brigadier General, Marine Waggle, and we introduced ourselves, I spoke with her for about 10 minutes. She wants to come to our county, she wants to meet Mike, she's excited to come here, she works for the veterans across the state, she specifically talked about the Vietnam veterans to me, and making sure they get the resources that they need. She talked about the Veterans Court, she was excited that we have a Veterans Court here, and she wants to meet Judge Buds, she's looking for judges to help mentor other judges, and introduce Veterans Courts to their counties, so I'm going to be emailing her tomorrow about coming in April, and meeting with all of us, and seeing what she can do across the state, and for our county, and for our veterans, but she specifically mentioned the Vietnam vets, and she helps them all, she wants to specifically help those that are in need right now, and it was an honor to meet her, she's very impressive.
Yeah, the, I think that we can take pride, and I think it was Judge Buds who initiated the Veterans Courts, because the Brigadier spoke highly of how the Veterans Courts have really helped veterans who face challenges not become mired in a criminal justice system that doesn't necessarily respond, so we do want to thank Judge Buds, and we should as a community be proud of that. I hope, I was actually just about a year too young for being drafted, it was, the war ended in 73, and I turned 18 in 74, but I think that for all of us, it was, and obviously for the folks who went over, it was a profound experience. I'm reading a memoir by one of our own veterans, Al Seaver. Is Al here today?
He's not, he was supposed to be.
Yeah, and he's written a book that Random House published, and I would encourage you to try to read it, those of you who are veterans are going to identify with it immediately, but I think it's helpful for us to understand that when we send 18-year-old and 19-year-old kids, kids, because in many ways, they still are, they go there as kids, but they don't come back, that it has a profound impact, and that we as people who don't go have a responsibility to make sure that we recognize the challenges that veterans face, whether it's in the areas of employment, education, PTSD, just the whole trauma of being in a war, and that we make sure we have the resources at the local, the state, and federal level, and it's great that Congressman Muser's representative is here today, because I know that they're committed to that too, but I just want to say that we as commissioners are open to do whatever needs to be done, to try to make sure that the veterans in our community are able to enjoy their lives in a way that has both dignity and a recognition from the rest of us. And we can thank Mike, and we can thank George Hykes before Mike, for the incredible work that they do, the Veterans Office upstairs, in making sure that our veterans get the financial resources to which they're entitled. And we have people every day who are not getting that, and who we can help, so if you know a veteran who is not getting all that they're entitled to, the other thing, just last comment I'd like to make, is that I think it's really important for you all to speak to the young people about what you experienced, because it helps them to understand why they're here, and what's happened, that allows them to do what they're able to do in terms of freedoms and other responsibilities. So we say, thank you very much, on behalf of the citizens of this county, and we won't just recognize you one day of the year, we'll try to acknowledge you every day of the year. We appreciate what you've done.
Thank you. We have a proclamation we'd like to give to Mike. We'd like everybody that's a veteran, please come up, and if they will, have their picture taken with us. We had Director Matt McDermott read this this morning, because he is a retired Lieutenant Colonel from the Army, and we felt it was appropriate that Matt read it this morning, and we just want to thank everyone for being here, and again, thank you to the veterans.
I just got notified yesterday, Wilkes-Barre VA Medical Center is going to be having the town hall, we got confirmation of that, it's April 26th, I believe, at Penn College, so we'll be getting some more stuff out as I get information from the medical center.
You might have to, yeah. She's got a big group.
You want to go back and try to take?
I can get it, I got it.
You got it?
Yep, one, two, three.
Excuse me? No way?
Judge Buds, would you want to say anything on Veterans Court?
I can really quickly.
Okay, yes.
Thanks.
I think one of the concerns that some county judges have, is they don't really have an understanding, and appreciation's a strong word, but an appreciation for everything that veterans have experienced, and understand the unique circumstances that they're presented with, especially as you both talked about, post-traumatic stress, and how they medicate that mental illness, which of course, we all know is stigmatized with drugs and/or alcohol, and that's how they find their way into the criminal justice system, and some counties just treat them as regular criminal defendants. I know why, I felt comfortable starting a Veterans Court, and this isn't about me, but just to give you some background, my father fought in World War II, he was a 30-year retired employee from the Department of the Army as a civilian. When I was in law school, I did really well in military law, and the professor I worked for was a retired Brigadier General, JAG of the Marine Corps, and I spent a summer at the criminal justice, or excuse me, at the criminal law, excuse me, at the JAG School, the Criminal Law Division in Charlottesville, Virginia, because there, for a brief moment, I considered joining the JAG Corps as an attorney. So I had all of this great knowledge and experience of working with primarily the Army, but also the Marine Corps, and living in San Diego, being very close to MCRD and the Naval Station, so that really had a really strong contact with the military, plus having a wonderful partner in Mike McMunn, who we first got to work together in regular drug court, when we had a veteran, and several veterans, who needed that extra support, that having that veteran mentor is just invaluable. And then when we were able to start a Veterans Court, and have veteran mentors work with the veterans, just the successes that we've been able to have with people, just knowing that they're not alone, and that we're here to help them, has really, I feel like it's made a huge difference. But as I started, some counties don't feel that connection to that population, and that's the problem, is the educational component of it, but we have a great county when it comes to inter-agency cooperation, so I couldn't be, if we're successful, which I'd like to think that we are, it's because of the collaborative effort that we have with our adult probation office, with Veterans Affairs, and with our Veterans Justice Outreach Coordinator, Lori, who is a licensed clinical social worker, who's even available for people who are in Veterans Court, who if someone comes through the public defender's office and needs some assistance, she's absolutely, just give us a, give me a yow, and then we'll take care of them.
I'm glad you raised that last point. That's really important for the public to understand, there's resources available to help people before it escalates to the point where it gets into the criminal justice system. And the woman that she mentioned, Lori, I mean, she has the skill, the training, a licensed social worker, clinical social worker, so you can, if you know someone who's struggling, and you don't know where to call, call us, call the Commissioners Office, we'll get you connected with her.
And Mike knows her very well too, and so if you don't feel comfortable calling the Commissioners, call Veterans Affairs, and Mike will get you connected with the resources that we have.
Good point.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
If, you're welcome to leave if you want to, don't feel free, or don't feel like obligated you have to stay, because our meetings can get pretty boring.
Oh, God.
You're welcome to stay if you like.
Wow, we like it, okay, excellent, nice to meet you. Thank you.
We all know Janie. Yeah, we all work with Janie.
Okay, moving on to service awards, Commissioners, I believe you're going to recognize somebody who has certainly matriculated many different levels of leadership and within the county, in the county court system. Phyllis Gaiet, Judge Buds, are you speaking on?
I would like to.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. We appreciate the fact also, that the Commissioners don't normally recognize that five-year increment, but because of Phyllis's unique service to the county, we requested, and we are grateful that the Commissioners have honored our request to recognize and appreciate Phyllis V. Gaiet. First, I wanted to just give you, put some things in perspective when it comes to Phyllis, that Afees has worked in the courthouse since 1956. Her husband, her first husband, Henry, who was the senior court reporter when I first started working with the courts in 1986, was the senior court reporter, and he was the court reporter to Judge Greedy initially, and then when I came here, he was Judge Rapp's court reporter. And then, one of my former employers, Brett V. S., her son, was the elected District Attorney between 1984 and 1992, so Henry worked for Judge Greedy from 56 to 1988, but then he would have continued, I guess, as I said, he worked with Judge Rapp as well. Phyllis started in 1988, and then Jessica, her granddaughter, Brett's daughter, has been working here in the courthouse since 2018, first as an Assistant Public Defender, and now she works in the District Attorney's Office. So we have had the great good fortune of the V. S. family working in some capacity in the courthouse, but also working indirectly or directly with the courts. Just some things about Phyllis that I think really underscore the fact that we're grateful that you were willing to acknowledge her. She has, I mean, there are a few of us that have been here for a little bit longer than Phyllis, and, but when it comes to whoever's going to be first in the building, she will always beat you, absolutely hands down, because she likes to make sure that all the files are absolutely the way they need to be, because the judge is an important person and needs to have everything correct. She also is willing to do whatever you need for her to do. She's worked in the capacity of a clerk with her fellow tips daves, she's also sat at the clerk's table, being the clerk in a trial. Back when Bill Bird was the pre-thonatory, we had clerks during non-jury trials, we had them in sentencing hearings, children and youth hearings, and Phyllis was one of those clerks that worked on behalf of our pre-thonatory, making sure that all the papers were correct, all the papers were properly signed. She still works in the capacity of an arraignment clerk, making sure that all the criminal informations filed by the Commonwealth are with the files that they need to be. She's also branched out into bailiff, which is the person, people think that a court schedule is etched in stone, and I'm sure Mr. Smith knows that that's not true also, that we have to be responsive between 8:30 and 5:00 to any emergencies that come in. Phyllis as a bailiff, along with Dave Wright and some other employees, Jim, Carrie, I don't see him here, they help us stay connected with those emergencies that come in, that we have all the paperwork, we have all the court files. And sometimes, if you're lucky like I have been, when your assistant goes on vacation, Phyllis will come in and be your gatekeeper, day or for the week, making sure that the people who are supposed to talk to the judge get in to see the judge, and the people who aren't supposed to see the judge get pointed in the right direction. So she, they're just only a few of the qualities and the talents that Phyllis has. I am very fortunate that I'm in the position that I am to be able to stand up here and share these things with you, because one of the things that underscores all of those is just what a wonderful, kind, and loving person that she is. And she is devoted to her church, she is devoted to her grandchildren, she's devoted to her family. As you all know, she recently suffered the loss of her husband Kurt, and yet she's still soldiers on, not to keep with the theme of the day, but she just
Judge Butts, would you want to say anything on Veterans Court?
I can really quickly.
Okay, yes.
I think one of the concerns that some county judges have is they don't really have an understanding or an appreciation is a strong word, but an appreciation for everything that veterans have experienced and understand the unique circumstances that they're presented with, especially as you both talked about post-traumatic stress and how they medicate that mental illness, which of course we all know is stigmatized with drugs and/or alcohol, and that's how they find their way into the criminal justice system. And some counties just treat them as regular criminal defendants. I know why. I felt comfortable starting a Veterans Court. This isn't about me, but just to give you some background, my father fought in World War II. He was a 30-year retired employee from the Department of the Army as a civilian. When I was in law school, I did really well in military law, and the professor I worked for was a retired Brigadier General, JAG, of the Marine Corps, and I spent a summer at the criminal justice, or excuse me, at the criminal law, excuse me, at the JAG School, the Criminal Law Division in Charlottesville, Virginia, because there for a brief moment I considered joining the JAG Corps as an attorney. So I had all of this great knowledge and experience of working with primarily the Army, but also the Marine Corps and living in San Diego, being very close to MCRD and the Naval Station, so that really had a really strong contact with the military, plus having a wonderful partner in Mike McMunn, who we first got to work together in regular drug court when we had a veteran and several veterans who needed that extra support, that having that veteran mentor is just invaluable. And then when we were able to start a Veterans Court and have veteran mentors work with the veterans, just the successes that we've been able to have with people, just knowing that they're not alone and that we're here to help them has really, I feel like it's made a huge difference. But as I started, some counties don't feel that connection to that population, and that's the problem, is the educational component of it. But we have a great county when it comes to inter-agency cooperation. So I couldn't be, if we're successful, which I'd like to think that we are, it's because of the collaborative effort that we have with our Adult Probation Office, with Veterans Affairs, and with our Veterans Justice Outreach Coordinator, Lori, who is a licensed clinical social worker, who's even available for people who are in Veterans Court, who if someone comes through the public defender's office and needs some assistance, she's absolutely, just give us a, give me a yell, and then we'll take care of them.
I'm glad you raised that last point. That's really important for the public to understand. There's resources available to help people before it escalates to the point where it gets into the criminal justice system. And the woman that she mentioned, Lori, I mean, she has the skill, the training, a licensed social worker, clinical social worker. So you can, if you, if you know someone who's struggling and you don't know where to call, call us, call the Commissioner's Office, we'll get you connected with her.
And Mike knows her very well, too, and so if you don't feel comfortable calling the Commissioners, call Veterans Affairs, and Mike will get you connected with the resources that we have.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
If, if, you're welcome to leave if you want to. Don't feel free, or don't feel like obligated to have to stay, because our meetings can get pretty boring. You're welcome to stay if you like.
Wow, we like it. Okay, excellent. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We all know Janie.
Yeah, we all work with Janie.
Okay, moving on to service awards. Commissioners, I believe you're going to recognize somebody who has certainly matriculated many different levels of leadership and within the county and the county court system. Phyllis Gaiet, Judge Butts, are you speaking on?
I would like to.
Absolutely.
Okay. Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. We appreciate the fact also that the Commissioners don't normally recognize that five-year increment, but because of Phyllis's unique service to the county, we were, we requested, and we are grateful that the Commissioners have honored our request to recognize and appreciate Phyllis V. Gaiet. First, I wanted to give, just give you, put some things in perspective when it comes to Phyllis, that Afees has worked in the courthouse since 1956. Her husband, her first husband, Henry, who was the senior court reporter when I first started working with the courts in 1986, was the senior court reporter, and he was the court reporter to Judge Greedy initially, and then when I came here, he was Judge Rapp's court reporter. And then one of my former employers, Brett Vies, her son, was the elected district attorney between 1984 and 1992. So Henry worked for Judge Greedy from 56 to 1988, but then he would have continued, I guess, as I said, he worked with Judge Rapp as well. Phyllis started in 1988, and then Jessica, her granddaughter, Brett's daughter, has been working here in the courthouse since 2018, first as an assistant public defender, and now she works in the district attorney's office. So we have had the great good fortune of the Vies family working in some capacity in the courthouse, but also working indirectly or directly with the courts. Just some things about Phyllis that I think really underscore the fact that we're grateful that you were willing to acknowledge her. She has, I mean, there are a few of us that have been here for a little bit longer than Phyllis, and, but when it comes to whoever's going to be first in the building, she will always beat you, absolutely hands down, because she likes to make sure that all the files are absolutely the way they need to be, because the judge is an important person and needs to have everything correct. She also is willing to do whatever you need for her to do. She's worked in the capacity of a clerk with her fellow tips, Dave's. She's also sat at the clerk's table, being the clerk in a trial. Back when Bill Bird was the pre-thonatory, we had clerks during non-jury trials, we had them in sentencing hearings, children and youth hearings, and Phyllis was one of those clerks that worked on behalf of our pre-thonatory, making sure that all the papers were correct, all the papers were properly signed. She still works in the capacity of an arraignment clerk, making sure that all the criminal informations filed by the Commonwealth are with the files that they need to be. She's also branched out into bailiff, which is the person, people think that a court schedule is etched in stone, and I'm sure Mr. Smith knows that that's not true also, that we have to be responsive between 8:30 and 5:00 to any emergencies that come in. Phyllis as a bailiff, along with Dave Wright and some other employees, Jim, Carrie, I don't see him here, they help us stay connected with those emergencies that come in, that we have all the paperwork, we have all the court files. And sometimes, if you're lucky, like I have been, when your assistant goes on vacation, Phyllis will come in and be your, a gatekeeper day or for the week, making sure that the people who are supposed to talk to the judge get in to see the judge, and the people who aren't supposed to see the judge get pointed in the right direction. So she, they're just only a few of the, of the qualities and the talents that Phyllis has. I am very fortunate that I'm in the position that I am to be able to stand up here and share these things with you, because one of the things that is, underscores all of those is just what a wonderful, kind, and loving person that she is. And she is devoted to her church, she is devoted to her grandchildren, she's devoted to her family. As you all know, she recently suffered the loss of her husband Kurt, and yet she's still soldiers on, not to keep with the theme of the day, but she just, she just wants to be, I, I, she strikes me as the person who is, to whom much is given, much is expected of in return, that she believes that a life of service is the best life to have. And so it's, with all of that in mind, we, as the courts, and me being the President and Judge, are grateful to the Commissioners to allow us to celebrate her commitment, her loyalty, her hard work, and her kindness that she has served over these last 35 years. So, thank you, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Bless you.
She's hiding around the corner. Phyllis, Commissioner Mirabito can't see you.
Phyllis, come on up. Can you come up to the podium?
Please come up and accept a round of applause.
Phyllis, you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, I hope I can continue working with the county. I feel as long as I'm capable of doing my job, that I would like to stay on. And I've always been very happy here, and I have wonderful, wonderful friends, and I'm just so happy to be here.
Thank you. Phyllis, I've known you for the, I started here in '86, I've known you the whole time. I remember Henry and Judge Rapp, and then we're dear friends, and they'd walk up Court Street to go over to Franny's for ice cream, and in the middle of the afternoon, Judge Rapp said, I have to make sure Henry gets his ice cream fixed. I think it was Judge Rapp had to get his ice cream fixed. And, but he was a dear man. I'm glad to see your granddaughter's working with the DA's office, and, and we're sad to hear about Kurt's passing. He was always a man of class, worked at the State Police. I want to know whether you dressed him or he dressed himself, because he was always dressed to the nines. I mean, he was always looking good.
I helped a little bit.
So, but your dedication and your, your attention to detail, I've noticed it since I've met you. I would say to, if someone asked me to describe you, I'd say that you, you're dedicated, you're loyal, you are a person who pays attention to detail, and you have elegance and class in everything that you do. And so, thank you for your years of service and your dedication, your hard work. I know the court system, everyone who knows you loves you. And so, thank you for all you do, for your church, your community, and keep going strong. You got a lot of years ahead of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And may I thank Judge Butts for all those wonderful words.
Phyllis, you are the quiet person behind the scenes that the public doesn't see, and I'm sad to say that I didn't really work with you too much. You know, my colleague worked in the court, and I didn't really get to see you. I did know your husband, a little bit, Kurt, from my years in the legislature and talking to him, but no, the description, and we have some mutual [inaudible] outside of here who speak incredibly highly of you. And I just want to say that on behalf of the citizens of the county who don't know a lot of the folks who keep the system moving, and obviously since 1956, your family has kept the system moving, and we thank you for that public service. I've interacted a little bit with your granddaughter, and I just want to say thank you. We really, the words that Judge Butts described of your commitment, I wish that you could somehow tell the young people about things like, do what needs to be done, and, and, you know, and maybe you can, maybe you can find a way to share those experiences and what you do with some of them, so that they can understand what it means to give to a community. Not that they're, don't get me wrong, I don't want to, but we know that we need to teach them, and you could be a teacher, especially with some of our new employees. In fact, I see the HR director here, and I think it would be great in our orientations to have someone who has 30 [inaudible] just talk a little bit about the kinds of things that you do, doing things before they have to be asked to be done, making sure you're a gatekeeper to the, to the judge, you know, that would be fantastic, because those, that kind of role model would help us shape employees in a life of public service. So thank you. I hope you'll think about that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis.
I'd like to get a picture of you and the judge, and we have a proclamation, or a proclamation, a certificate here for the, plus a pin for years of service.
You could be our new ambassador.
Thank you, buddy.
I see a TikTok video or something.
Yeah. We're going to take a picture here, Phyllis, and then we're going to get the judges and the [inaudible]. Yeah, Judge Butts.
It's not about me.
No, no, I know, but it might be nice to have.
That's why I don't want to be up there. It's about her.
Yeah, well, we'll take another one with you all. And then let's, I think the court personnel, they would, you would love to have, right?
With the courts.
Come on, the courts.
With your colleagues.
Your colleagues who you work with every day.
Come on, you guys, don't be shy.
The judge told me that.
I did.
Kelly, you're short, you're good.
I got Jessica's phone, I'm good. Everybody look over here for Jessica's phone.
Ludo.
Dido, here we go.
Thank you. Okay, reports, panel?
Good morning. Presented for your ratification are invoices due through March 29th, 2023, to be paid on March 22nd, 2023, in the amount of $1,590,443.18. The breakdown is as follows, with 83.45% being funded by the general fund at $1,327,229.28. 3.95% is being funded by grants and other sources at $62,764.83. And 12.60% is being funded by RMS at $204,49.7.
Okay, motion? I'll move to approve. No second. Any questions or comments? All fair side? Aye. Aye, so carried. Thank you, panel.
Thank you.
Commissioner, before you guys move on, I think what we want to do, too, is approve the GS, the ratification of the GSA wire transfer that did last, which is noted right below. Is it on the agenda?
It's on the.
Yeah, it's on the, on the sheet. Oh, it's on the bottom of the sheet, yeah. It's also on the summary on the back. Okay, I'll, I'll move to approve the GSA wire transfer of $650,000 that's being funded by the general fund at this point, and that is for the 10% down payment on the purchase of the land for the landfill.
That's great. I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Okay, moving on to personal actions. Jessica.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so for assessment, Stacy Snyder hired as a clerk for position, full-time replacement at 1764 per hour, and she's anticipated to start on March 27. For facilities management, Niles Stovers was, is transferring into a maintenance brief, full-time position at 2912 per hour, and he's anticipated to transfer on April the 3rd. And Judge Beasley's office, Amber Winder, hired as an administrative specialist, full-time replacement at 1796 per hour, and she's anticipated to start on April the 3rd. For the prison, Kylie Dewitt, correction officer, full-time replacement, hired at $20 an hour, anticipated to start on March 26. For the pre-release center, Brian Higgins hired as a resident supervisor, one full-time replacement position at 1718 per hour, anticipated to start on April the 10th.
Okay, motion?
Um, one more, sorry. In the DA's office, Renee Thomas, hired as a clerk, three position, full-time replacement, hired at 1473 per hour, anticipated to start on April 11.
Yeah, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Jess, can you introduce our new budget director?
Yes, absolutely.
In the audience?
Yes, our new budget director, Eric Enderson, started this Monday, and he's hit the ground running, and we're very excited to have him here, so.
Eric, you want to come up and say a word?
Yeah.
Introduce yourself to the public.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I'm really happy to be here. Thank the Commissioners and Matt for hiring me. I have about 20 years' experience in township and state college area as a budget director or finance director, and looking forward to working with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll recess the Commissioners' public meeting for the salary board, and we'll convene the salary board this time.
Salary board seeking your approval on the following actions. Information Technology, request to remove software analyst, grade 10, position from the TDA. And then, in information technology, we're going to request to add a software specialist, grade 9, to the team. So we're getting rid of 10, bringing on a 9.
Okay.
And in the Conservation District, request to add a temporary part-time administrative specialist, pay grade 6, not to exceed 450 hours. And if I remember correctly, that's completely funded by the Conservation District.
Do you have a motion?
I'm a.
Second?
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried, real vote. And at this time, we will adjourn the salary board and reconvene the Commissioners' public meeting. Go to TDA actions.
Would you like me to read through them? You never know.
Uh, yes.
Okay. So making the same changes that the director just discussed in IS, we're changing the software analyst position, grade 10, removing that, and then adding the software specialist, grade 9. And then for the Conservation District, we're adding the temporary part-time administrative specialist, pay grade 6, not to exceed 450 hours. And that position is intended to help train the new person. Let me get started.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. And we're on to action. Ladies and gentlemen.
All right, 7.1, Commissioners seeking your approval for the agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees in the Pre-Release Center, look, 3403. This is a long-awaited union contract for PRC, and there are 2023 budgeted funds available for this section.
Okay, now, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
7.2.
A quick comment on that.
Yes.
Think that the contract has enabled both the, the members of the union and the county to, to create some employment, ladders there, I should call them, right, the, and just to try to recognize what they do over at the PRC. So it's, it's a good result all around for that.
It's a good point to mention.
7.2, Commissioners seeking your approval on the commercial insurance proposal from the Hartman Group. This is for the County Recreational Authority in the amount of $2,270. It's a 2023 budgeted item. It is still a requirement, because we have the authority, we need to provide that insurance.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second? All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
7.3, bye. Yeah, I almost crossed your name out.
This is just a PMR, a project modification request, that we're doing on our IP grant, just basically moving monies, but it requires a request, no additional monies, just a movement of monies from one budget category to the other.
And why, why do we have to move?
This was a request that came from the courts. So there should be, I apologize, I forgot to get it, but there should be a justification request on the bottom, usually there, so the attached page, that details the request. Unfortunately, that's one grant that is, you know, run in coordination with West Branch Drug and Alcohol. That's something that I oversee, but not necessarily administer.
Looks like drug testing.
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
7.4 through 7.6, Nancy.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Nancy.
7.4 is juvenile probation, is asking for your approval for dingoes, dingoes, and moles. They provide legal services for all juvenile matters assigned by Lehigh County Public Defender's Office, and there's no rate increase for this contract.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
7.5, asking for your approval for Gillum Psychological and Counseling Services. There is no rate increase for this contract this year.
Okay, now, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
And 7.6, asking for approval for chore, youth, and family services. This is a residential setting in Berks County. Let me see, the behavioral, it's a leading nonprofit offering mental and behavioral health and education services to care for adverse children using their families with our offices in Berks County School Hill and Greater Lehigh. They have residential for boys, girls, specialized residential foster care and specialized foster care. There was a program increase for about basically 10% across all of the programs, and three of them had no rate change.
Okay, do we have anybody down there?
No, not this time.
Okay, now, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Nancy.
Have a good day.
You, too.
All right, 7.7, Paula, the Radiation Emergency Response.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I am here to seek your approval for the 2023-2024 Radiation Emergency Response Fund Grant Application. This is our annual funding for $5,856 for being a support county to the Cecil Hannah Electric Steam Station in Burwick, PA, and this is a 2023 budgeted item.
Okay, now, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Thank you.
7.8, Jerry, software maintenance.
Morning, Commissioners. Jerry Kennedy, CIO. Before you this morning is the approval of the pre-thonary's civil document management system, cost of $23,238. This is a 2023 budgeted item.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second, any questions?
No, the, it's kind of one of these things where we fix a bridge, we have high water and then it wipes out some of the work and it has to be redone.
And we got to get it done before.
We can, right.
The time.
Right, and before we can sign off on the bridge, we have to be in compliance with the permit.
Yeah, well, once we're in, sorry to interrupt you.
No, no, that's okay.
Well, once we're in compliance, isn't like a thing that we're repeatedly on the hook for. It becomes a township maintenance issue at that point, but before we can turn it back over, we have to get into compliance.
Right.
In the first place.
It's just unfortunate. This is, this is what happens with the weather, but it's also, on a, on a related note, it's a reason why when we work to try to help communities become resilient, it's important that the communities try to work with the planning department on issues of flooding because the damage that can happen is, is just, we've seen in the past, is really catastrophic, so.
Okay, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie.
Thank you. Seven point eleven, Ken, direct energy agreement.
Morning, Ken.
Morning, commissioners. This is a renewal agreement with direct energy for our direct gas, our natural gas and our electricity transactions.
Okay. Motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, Commissioner, comment? So, if you have not seen it yet, the LeCuny County Department of Planning and Community Development has their new annual report for twenty-two-two. This is literally a what's happening in the county. I looked through it and it's amazing. They've done a really good job of going through and describing all the different projects that are going on. So especially for the public, if you want to know what's happening in the county Department of Planning and Community Development, it's a great place. I'm guessing that it's online. I don't see anyone here from planning, but I'm willing to put, put some money on the fact that it's online. Mr. McDermott, wouldn't you agree that it's online?
Yeah.
Or will be online. I'm sure it is online. But it really, it really is a great place for people to look to see what's happening in the county. And I would encourage all the members of the public to take a minute and look at it. It goes through the American Rescue Plan, the work the commissioners have done, the transportation, the bridge bundling program, hazard mitigation, the fare program. We approved the TLC today. It's just a great, a great place to see how, what's happening. They even go through and list some new employees from twenty-two-two, so. Hot off the press.
Okay, thank you.
All right, public comment?
It is on the website.
Thank you, Controller.
There, we won't lose your money. Hello, comment, anybody?
Hi.
Yeah.
I'm sure Phyllis is going to read something.
And then it was TCD.
How are you?
Good, Harry.
Good. Just like to mention.
State your name, please.
Okay, Tom Adams Williamsport.
Thank you.
Appreciate the, I got to, you know, mention, I do appreciate our newspapers, you know, the Sun Gazette and the, and the Webb Weekly that come out. Although I'm not allowed to get the, the hard copy of the Sun Gazette because you know what papers are all over the place, but, you know, I'm not so crazy about the Associated Press stories because I know they're slanted, but at least they're getting the information and the opinions and the letters that they print. I've heard people complain, well, they're just one side, but they're not. I mean, they allow both sides to be presented and I like that. I encourage people to get those papers. Well, web comes, but Gazette, because it does keep you informed and they do allow different things to be printed. I think that's great. I did want to mention Proverbs fourteen-one, the wise man builds their house, but the foolish tears it down with their own hands. And I think that's what we see going on in our country. Because when there is no vision, the people are unrestrained and that's Proverbs twenty-nine eighteen, first part of it. So, when we're turning our back on God, we have this nonsense of the riots and, but we're seeing justice turn around on its head in Philadelphia. They're awarded, the people that were rioting, nine and a quarter million dollars for tearing up the city because they got tear gas and, you know, they were mentally and emotionally damaged. You'd be kidding me. But, and that's not, tax money isn't just going to come from Philly, it's coming from all of us. And Philadelphs are always crying for money and it's, I don't know, I think a lot of the money that's being sent over Ukraine is being laundered and come right back to attack us with the different, with these different groups that are funded by, by the communists. That's, that's my take on it, but, you know, and just mention it so we can be ever vigilance and we can stand against it in our county. We can be a light and a, and a, you know, a model for the rest of the country or our state and we'll stay strong on saying the principles that we're founded on. Because when we lose that, not just the vision of, of now and the future, but the vision from, from the past, from our founders and what their visions were and how they built this country, we have to hold, those are the ideals that we need to keep, to keep freedom and keep strong and to fight against tyranny and the injustice.
Thank you, Tom. Any votes from the audience? Any online?
None online.
Okay, we've completed our agenda, so we will be adjourned. Our next meeting will be Thursday, March thirtieth, right here in this room at ten a.m. Thank you. Have a good day.
Hard to believe March is almost there.
It's crazy.
Crazy.
Seriously.
Yeah.
Okay, let me get your stuff.
Maybe your space is done.
Memorial Day, be here, be here.
Tony's not here.
Been a few years.
Been a lot, lot of years.
It's Monday. So, Tom? Yes. Six, seven, that one's going to be here tomorrow.
They're there, sir.
Yeah, so, but definitely.[1554.72]